Well, let's try it again.
Yeah.
Let's call this meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order.
All right, Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda?
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Communications, Jake?
Uh, I did receive a request. We had a gentleman, uh, the new owners of Wackos, um, missed the deadline, uh, to get their new alcoholic beverage, um, application in this meeting, so they would just appreciate if there's an available time before the next meeting that they could be included, so.
Available time before your next meeting?
I'm just passing on the information. He just asked me to ask you guys that, if there was anything available before. I said the next meeting was the 13th.
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't, uh, board look at your schedules and see if there's a time that works in the next, I mean tomorrow and that, that's gonna be so
Yeah, no.
Busy, that, so it has to be next week.
Yeah, that's fine, and I only sent out the, um, packet to all the departments, so they would need time to review as well, so if you wanna think about it for next week, that's
Look at your schedules for next week and see what day works.
It would be a very
All right. Very good, board, any communications?
Yeah, um, I would just, uh, no, I don't have any communications, it'll be in public comments, it's fine.
Okay, Steve?
No, none.
All right, none from me. Public comments? Portion of the agenda, the public can speak on items not listed. Board can't act on those items, they could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments?
I would just like to, uh, remind, uh, everyone, and this isn't obviously an action, but, um, the courthouse closure is tomorrow. So please be mindful of ragby.
Very good, thank you, Keisha. Any other public comments? Items not listed this morning. Right? Nothing online? We'll move on. Is there a motion on the consent agenda this morning?
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
All right. Very good, on the business, item number one. Update on the body worn camera, car camera management system. Is that a dual thing here? All right, Nicole and Jason, all right?
I'm not that tall. Um, so the county has a computer system that's for our body worn and car cameras, this manages those videos, both offloading it from the cars, from the body cams that they wear, it allows them to share it out. All kinds of things. This is an outdated system. It's had a lot of problems recently that we really need to address and move forward from. So what we need is approval for about fifteen thousand dollars to go forward and update this system. This is one of the critical systems in our sheriff's office for evidence.
All right, thank you, Jason.
This, this was actually, um, Andrew was working on this, uh, before his passing. So it's one of those things that he had started the process, and Nicole picked it up from that point on or whatever, and, um, we were gonna be presenting this together at that time, or whatever. Nicole's done a lot of the research, the background on it, it's something that we obviously have to have, or whatever, for the body one side of it.
Right, so is it, Jason, is an update to the software portion, or? What, what, what are we updating?
Everything, it's both software and hardware.
Okay. New cameras?
New cameras.
We keep everything that we have, it's just the back
The backend server.
The back inside of things need to be updated to keep that side, our body cams are still good, all those lines, it's just back inside of it.
Okay. Board questions for?
And so is this something that Andrew was taking care of out of his budget, or was it just trying to understand what, what was planned there, I guess?
I don't think, well, I don't think there was really a determination on that, I think it was his budget, but I don't wanna say that, I don't, I don't feel for sure. I mean, along those lines, I
Yeah, Jake, Jake, do you have any idea where, where dollars allocated for this?
I, I do not know if he had anything specific in mind for that, um, if it would all be general fund money, um, it's fifty, for that amount of money, there is some, um, placeholders for things that come up along the year in Department ninety-nine, um, if it comes out of, uh, Department fifty-two for IT, um, and you, that would be a problem at the end of the year, you guys would know that this came up for that, or the sheriff's budget. It's all general fund, um, if, if it needed to be accounting for good of the county and it needed to come out of ninety-nine, there are some placeholders for that if you need to.
Yeah, well, I think it's a pretty mission critical piece, so board, is there a motion to approve the additional funds and we'll work out the accounting details later?
I'd move to approve the additional funds.
I'll second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good, thank you. Next, Travis Trust request. We talked about this in our last meeting. Mr. Richardson, do you have comments?
Roy Richardson. Did my best to try to gracefully get out of the corner over there.
That's
If you recall, two weeks ago, I said we were probably gonna ask you for the uh, balance of the Travis Trust. And after visiting with Michaela, um, we're very satisfied with what the county's doing with those funds as far as investment. And so we're backing off to just asking for thirty thousand distribution at the end of the month.
Okay.
Same as I've been having for several years now.
Okay. Uh, Jake, what's the current balance in the fund?
Uh, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay. And Jared, from a distribution standpoint, we can make piecemeal distributions out of the fund?
Yes, we took a look at this and that seems appropriate.
Okay. Okay.
I think Michaela indicated at the end of the month was best for her bookkeeping wise.
Sure.
So that's fine with us.
Questions for Mr. Richardson on this?
Nope, I'm fine with just doing it like we have done in the past, and, yep.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, obviously we know what the trust was set up for, so.
Very good, is there a motion?
Yeah, make motion to approve thirty thousand dollars, um, from the, uh, Travis Trust, sorry, wanted to make sure I got the name right, Travis Trust request.
Second.
Senior Senator.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Packaging three meals today to avoid ragby, so.
All right, thank you, Ms. Richardson. All right, we've got, uh, Pella Library Letter, we've talked about this in our last meeting, there's been, uh, communication discussion about certain programs uh, that were being curtailed within the Pella Public Library for rural residents. Mara came here last week, is Mara on?
I'm here.
Okay, and Mara, the board had asked for data uh, and some follow-up on this, as far as the programs impacted and usage and dollars, did you get a chance to do that, and is there anything you would like to comment on?
Yeah, I had sent a follow-up email to the Board of Supervisors, um, and I CC'd, uh, Jake Grandia, the Library Board and City of Pella Administration. Um, and it outlined information regarding the twenty-three, twenty-four rural county cardholder usage at the Pella Public Library. Uh, and that detailed that thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty physical items were borrowed by rural county cardholders last year, or twenty-one percent of physical items borrowed. Three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five hoopla items were borrowed, or twenty-four percent of total hoopla usage. And six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two bridges items or twenty-three percent of total bridges usage, um. And we filled approximately three hundred requests from residents of rural Marion County, that was primarily physical materials, but also included electronic resources. Um, and I also shared that twenty-five percent of the library's twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget, excluding salaries and building maintenance, um, is approximately fifty-five thousand dollars, and this includes the usage of physical items, um, or expenditures for physical items, electronic resources and programs, um, by rural county cardholders.
All right. Mara, thank you.
And it's Mira.
Oh, Mira?
Yep, yep. Yes.
Like Sarah, yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, in terms of the total dollars you need, can you just give us a gross dollar amount, what are you looking for?
So the funding that we would have received based upon the previous, uh, funding model, um, of monies allocated based upon usage by rural county cardholders, we would have received approximately fifty thousand dollars, and so, um, that is uh, what, uh, the board feels would be, uh, would be sufficient based upon the usage and past funding allocations.
I have some comments, yeah. So, Mara, um, and regarding, and this would be to the board too, I believe we have some board that's present today. Reading this, and I, I, I went back and got the city of Pella's budget, um, offline. And so reading these numbers, I guess I have some questions, because when I go through and I look at what you're asking and you're saying the fifty thousand, but if I go to the library supplies and service off your budget, subtract the twelve thousand dollars from the building, maintenance and repair, um, I, I'm struggling with where you're coming up with your numbers, and, and this is why. So when we look, and these are a lot of numbers I'm putting out here, so I'm trying to, hopefully everybody can follow along. When you take the physical items, which is twenty-one percent, hoopla usage twenty-four percent, and bridges usage twenty-three, you know, you add those up, divide them and round it, it's, it's roughly twenty-three percent. So we know that the cardholders are twenty percent, but we know this usage is twenty-three percent. When I go through and I review this, and I subtract the twelve thousand dollars for building and maintenance, times that times twenty-three percent, for FY twenty-three and twenty-four, the cost would be forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The county gave forty-three thousand, so that exceeds. FY twenty-four and twenty-five, in your budget request, again, that times the twenty-three, so if we take again the twelve, twelve thousand dollars off, and I times that times twenty-three percent, that's thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty. The county is giving forty thousand, which exceeds. I guess I'm struggling with the fifty thousand when you are receiving, you received forty-three last year, forty this year, and it's covering the cost of the rural citizens. And I know that, um, you provide which would be a higher platform, the hoopla and the, I don't know how you pronounce, is it canalope or canopy, canopy?
Canopy.
As, yeah, is a higher platform than most of the libraries in the county, um, and that's by your choice, I mean, that's but even if that, we're still covering the costs, so board, I would just like you to consider that.
And what I would like to make clear is that you know, the cost for the electronic resources or, um, physical resources and programming, um, it, it's, it's well, um, even if you're looking at, I think just twenty to twenty-five percent of the cost, it, it still is more than the, the forty thousand, um, that was allocated for this, this current fiscal year.
Mara, the services that you're cutting to rural residents are, is the correct me if I'm wrong, but it'd be the e-services, like ebooks and stuff like that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, what about couldn't, couldn't we offer bridges to rural residents that, that are offered to you from the state library? And according to these numbers, if there's two thousand, one hundred and nineteen rural cardholders, and, and the, you know, the bridges services that are provided from the state that cost, uh, let's see, two thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars to the city of Pella for just bridges services?
Well, the bridges, that's the base amount for bridges, but we also, um, pay additional fees for any additional licenses that, um, that we acquire on bridges.
Well, but the number, seven hun, you say seven hundred and sixty-six rural users cardholders use those services, is that, am I correct in that number?
That was the, the number that I had, yes.
Okay. Well, for just, just for the bridges services, that number I think, I think I had that number, it was like five hundred and seventy-some dollars is what that service would have cost for those rural users. I, I'm, I, I mean, this is so complicated that
It is.
You know, I don't think it's fair to blame this board or any future boards on any funding shortfalls, and we don't know what we're actually providing or for the rural residents. Uh, I don't have a problem with paying or share, I just have a problem with some of the numbers.
Jason?
I'll just, I'll speak for the Marion County Department Heads in regards to, it's tough times. Um, I think that you guys have mentioned numerous times here, or whatever, that you're above and beyond what the code requires on that library side, we all support libraries, but I think part of the decision, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the three of you, and the reason you did a little bit of a reduction is because as department heads, we're coming to you, and we have expenses and those costs that have to happen and are there, so I would just, I mean, encourage you to remember why the reduction was, it wasn't to penalize anybody, it wasn't to say that libraries aren't important, but just to know that there's a lot of expenses that we have in the county that we're trying to cover, and so when we come to you or whatever, that's, that's part of those reasons or whatever on that reduction, you asked all of us to have reductions as department head, so just please remember that moving forward, thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Now, that's, that's the trouble I struggle with too, Jason, is we ask our own departments to be very budget-minded, and, and we struggle with that every year uh, on the services that we wish, that we need to provide for our citizens, and if, how are we gonna sustain those services? That's why I'm struggling with some of these numbers is uh, it, it's difficult. It, it's pretty easy to set a budget when somebody else is paying the bills.
And I certainly respect that you know, every department and organization is making difficult fiscal decisions, and that's part of what the library board has been struggling with, is that, um, you know, it, with the cost of electronic materials nearly doubling just within the past two years, largely due to increased hoopla usage, you know, it's, it's just not possible to continue the same, uh, rate of services with, um, static or reduced funding.
Well, I, I know the state has, has probably cut some funding too to the libraries, you know, and as far as the formula that the state has set up to provide those funds, I think that's probably that's probably an issue that the board, library boards around the state need to take up with the Iowa Legislature.
And, and that is something that, um, individual libraries, the State Library Association, the State Library of Iowa have all been addressing for years, um, working to address for years, um, but unfortunately, that that funding formula has remained static.
I, I know, I know, Mara, we struggle with that ourselves.
Yeah.
I know we talk about the evaluation of property, and, you know, on how some of these formulas are funded, but well, I don't know, just in my, my simple brain, it seems like we're gonna be evaluated out of existence, one of the things, they just are trying to keep up with the daily economics.
I, I guess I would ask the library board to go back and actually look at this and, and see what I'm talking about, and that we are doing our portion and we are funding it. Um, because I do think it is important that you just like anybody, whether it would be me, or, you know, um, the library director, it doesn't matter, I mean, just, I think it's always important that we all do our own research and we look at it, but I, clearly shows to me that we are funding our portion and the rule, and that, um, that is up to you, and whether, I mean, you guys are offering a higher platform, um, is there a way that maybe you just reduce to the rural citizens the bridges? If you wanted to offer, um, hoopla to the city, is that an option? Um, things to think about, but I do think that cutting services completely um, is not right, because from what I see, we are providing what we need to.
That's one of the questions I ask, why couldn't we just offer the bridges to the rural residents? Or, or what about even if you wanna offer all these services on a pay-per-use basis, it'd only be like four dollars per resident, if, if I'm, if I've if I've crunched my numbers correctly?
Um, hoopla and canopy are already both pay-per-use models, um. And at this time, um, the, my, my understanding is that for our system, we can have electronic access or not electronic access, so, um, it, it's difficult to, um, eliminate only access to only one electronic resource, um.
There again, that's why I said this is pretty complicated, it's more complicated than than just a a funding resource.
Board, I have one question, um, so this is also includes the one mile around Pella that has to comply with city of Pella zoning regulations and other regulations, but now they're losing their funding because they're outside the city limits, is that correct?
Could be, that would be a direction to the board, the library board.
If, if they're a rural county resident, then they would be, um, included in this, in this measure, yes.
But they have to follow the guidelines of the one mile.
Correct.
Yeah.
Hmm.
That's something the board needs to think of.
Kind of a double standard.
Well, the, the libraries are funded by the, um, the municipalities that they are in, and then the, the, the county or the primary, primary, um, funders, and so that and of course, that funding is through the, the property taxes, um, and so that is determined by their residents, by their address.
I just wanted to say one thing, so I'm new to the library board, it's my first month, so Amy Meyer.
Man.
We could use the mic.
Mic, yeah.
Um, but I came from the Friends of the Public Library, so we were the fundraising and the volunteer piece of the library, and I just wanted to make sure, I hadn't heard it mentioned, so I just wanna make sure it was on your radar, um, that there's a lot of private donations that are going in to support hoopla, hoopla is the biggest expense of the Friends of the Public Library, we actually paid about half of, uh, the cost for the year, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that there was already private funding also going in to supplement this. Um, and then, again, from the one board meeting that I've been to so far, uh, we did discuss kind of the pay-to-play type model, because it does cost us like two dollars and fifty cents roughly for each book that we check out through hoopla, um, and the library pays that, um, we weren't kind of interested in passing those costs along, because we just felt that the library's, you know, a great equalizer, and we didn't want it to be people who could afford it could get it, and people who couldn't afford it couldn't, so that was kind of the discussion that we had there to answer that question.
I've never used these services, but
Yes, I have.
Uh, what's the difference between hoopla, bridges, I mean?
Yeah, um, uh, Mara will definitely have to stop me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, just from it as a user perspective, um, so hoopla is more bridges comes from the library association, correct, Mara?
State library.
The state library, um, so there's some subsidy there, and we get access through it like that. Waits are way longer with bridges, hoopla usually can get stuff a little bit quicker, the waits are months and months and months, usually if you're looking for something that is somewhat popular, um.
Is it, I mean, do you, can you get the same book from bridges?
You could likely get the same book.
It's pretty different content.
It's different, I mean, there's different things available in each, but there, there's definitely the possibility of having the same thing on both, correct?
There is some crossover, but they are different collections, and there are different titles on each platform, and that's part of the reason for the demand for both, um, and I'll just also add to what Amy shared is that yes, the, the Friends have provided significant support over the years, but they also have had to reduce that support um, over the past year, and that was part of the reason for this, um, topic being taken under consideration by the board.
Correct, we were having these conversations already for the two years that I was on the board of how can we continue to provide this service, which is our ultimate goal, um, but, you know, private donations don't really flow in for that kind of thing, so we, there's a lot of book sales, there's a lot of, a lot of fundraising efforts that take place just to be at the level that we are right now, so again, just like you're saying that you, um, you know, are doing your fair share, wanna be doing all you can to continue the service, that is definitely our number one goal as well, both as speaking for the Friends of the Public Library and the library board.
So are we, are we being asked to fund something that may or may not be used, because if seven hundred, only seven hundred and sixty-six users rural users use it, are we gonna fund that, or are we gonna fund the possibility of all two thousand, one hundred and twenty of them using it?
We're, the numbers Mara provided were based on usage, so that's saying that of every hoopla book that was checked out, twenty-three percent of them were to rural residents, so a significant portion of that.
That's three thousand dollars.
So I also wanna expand on this a little bit, my understanding is, is that you could be on bridges and you can be on hoopla, so this way you can wait over here for one book, and you can go over here and get another book.
Or it might not have it, yeah.
Yeah, or might not have it, so, um, offering, uh, what you're considering more than one platform uh, for these users, um, whereas some of these libraries are not, they're just using the bridges.
It's very common to not have hoopla because of the cost.
Yeah. There isn't any way that, uh, those costs then could be, um, Mara, there wouldn't be any way that those costs could be then passed on to the rural residents if they wanted to do hoopla?
Um, as Amy mentioned, that was considered, but it the concern was that that would create an inequity among those households that would be able to pay that fee and those that would not.
But you would be but you're okay with, and the library board is okay with excluding the e-sources all the way, that's, I'm struggling with that, I guess.
They thought that that was a more equitable decision than, than charging, um, charging individual fee, um, and putting household creating an inequity among those households that might be able to pay for that additional fee and those that would not.
Sounds like we got a lot of numbers to crunch. I'll, I'll just say this. I think I said this when we were talking about our distribution to the libraries. It, and I think Missy brought at this point with the mile, uh, zone that we have around Pella, where the rural residents are really taking care of some of the areas that are subject to Pella zoning laws through our road department, the sheriff, et cetera. Uh, in, in addition, uh, I mean, our rural residents contributed to the building of Prairie Ridge. It was four point seven million dollars. So if it's funded by the municipality, if the library is funded by the municipality, when do the rural residents get credit for that?
And that's a and I think that's, um, certainly a, a point I, I've heard brought up, um, I will say that any funding for that type of initiative or that bonding does not necessarily correlate to increased funding to, um, the municipal
That has, if it's, if it's, if you're funded by the municipality through tax dollars, and you have an increased population base and increased tax base, yes, it does.
Yeah.
It correlates directly.
The ninety-four homes that are in Prairie Ridge?
Yes.
Yeah, will be property taxes.
It correlates directly.
It correlates directly with the municipality.
Yeah. Thank you.
It, it does not result in additional funding to the public libraries.
It has to. If you're funded by the municipality, it either reduces the cost of the library, because you have an expanded population base and more tax dollars, or you're able to collect more tax dollars, which then contribute to the potential of more funding, it has to do one or the other. And I, and that's never counted into this mix, nor is the expense ratio of the library ever counted into this mix, I get it, it costs money to run these things, but I've looked at your expenses, I mean, my gosh. I should have majored in library science.
I, I'm not clear what you mean by that, I mean, we, we spend a significant amount of funds on hard copy materials, electronic resources, materials for programming, um, for all of our patrons, and a good amount of that for, um, our rural county cardholders as well.
Yeah. Well, what I, what I'm really getting at is, I, I think the rural communities have contributed a significant amount to the development of Pella and Knoxville through the projects that we've undertaken. And that doesn't seem to get counted in this mix, we count everything else, hoopla down to the penny, but we're not counting those projects which have material, long-term impacts, positive impacts to both Pella and Knoxville. There's, there's no mathematical way around that. to both Pella and Knoxville. There's, there's no mathematical way around that.
And what the board has to consider is the funding that that we're receiving from um different entities and then the the cost to provide those services. And so again, that was the the reason for um, this topic being taken under consideration.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments from library board, anybody else?
I guess I would just say we want to provide these services to all of our cardholders. Um, we but we need, need sufficient funding um, from all the parties to be able to, to continue that. So I want to make clear that we want to provide these services to all of our patrons.
We're in the same boat, Matt Mara.
At a, at a minimum, here's what I would suggest. You guys can do what you want. Uh, Keisha, you've gone through some math on what has actually been provided. Now, without seeing that, they have no way to validate that or check that. So I think at a minimum, you should get together with representatives of the library board and go through that math that you articulated. And make sure that we're talking apples to apples here. And at least do that, and then come back to the board and see whether or not we need to do anything and make any adjustments. Does that sound fair?
Yes, it does.
No, be fine. Let me know when you guys meet again, and I'm more than happy to, uh, I'd like to, I don't know if it's, is it the not until next month?
It's the second Tuesday of the month at four P M. It's August thirteenth.
Okay, yeah. Um, if you, if I could be placed on the agenda, I would be, you know, very appreciated.
Okay, good. So at least do that and see where we stand.
Sounds good.
Fair? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your comments, folks. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Make motion to close discussion. Raimi.
Hi.
Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good. Thank you. Next, uh, VA campus and Knoxville Community Schools. Cassie.
I want to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors for approving the updated revised concept map that you did at your last meeting for the VA campus. Um, and this is going to be just more infor- informative. There's no action being asked of the Board of Supervisors. Um, but the school uh, still intends to take that parcel that you had uh, designated in the last concept um, and someday develop it. We don't know when that will be exactly, but our plan is um, to go ahead and release the deed for the old middle school, high school property to the city of Knoxville. And then following the twenty-eight E agreement that the county and the city have for the VA development, we will acquire that land out at the VA when those parcels in that location are developed um, in whatever phase that ends up being. And so we will just go ahead and continue to follow the same process that the Board of Supervisors and the city have set up for development of all of that ground.
Okay, Cassie, can I, I want to make sure I clarify this, so people don't misunderstand. There, you're saying that as far as the new plan, the revised plan that was approved, you're glad we did that?
Yes.
Gives you future direction. You're going to release the ground that the old, my old high school sat on to the city, correct? Okay, the place that is designated in the new plan for a potential school, when the time comes, you'll approach the board and we'll go through the same process that we've gone through with the city of Knoxville for land transfer.
It actually, when we got the attorneys for the county, the city and the school district together, they all determined that the gifting agreement actually should probably come from the city. The county will release the phase, the amount of ground that
So you want to do this concurrently?
So it'll be concurrently, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure we all understand.
We're not doing a separate twenty-eight E.
So.
Correct. So what, what will happen then is um, the city, as the county, has actually just decided on phase one development. You worked with the city for that ground to be surveyed, have the abstracts brought up and uh, available for development and purchase. Um, when the ground where the school designated plot is, when that becomes the next set of development, then the county and the city will continue to use your same twenty-eight E agreement and process for that. And then once that's completed, the school and the city will work on beating over the property.
Hey, uh, Jared, do you have any comments on that? You're looking puzzled back there.
I, I have been part of these email chains. I just, I just want to make clear that I, my role in this was to just sort of look at them uh, to approve content and just await the Board of Supervisors, you know, making a decision on this. I um, as far as any policy agreement or anything like that, I I'm not aware of that. I know that there's been stuff that's been sent to me to review, but I was just waiting for a direction to see, you know, what the board's decision was before we could um, review the documents to make sure they conform with the, the board's decision.
So it sounds like, Cassie, when are you planning on the city transfer? You're, you're going
For the school ground?
Yeah.
It could be a while. And the reason for that, Keisha asked some great questions. So when we talk about surveying um, the ten acres, because the old high school, middle school area is ten acres and we're looking at the equivalent of ten acres out at the VA in that location, um, the city is the one who has been part of getting that portion done. And in order to do uh, an official gifting agreement or a purchase or land transaction, we have to have the latitude, longitude, all of those pieces from an apps to create an abstract.
Sure.
Completed. And that is going to be a little while because we aren't ready for that. The other portion um, that gets complicated is the utility usage. And the county isn't actually providing any of the streets or the sewer, a lift station um, or any of that. The city is. So after more conversation um, with the city and school, those are the two entities that are going to have to make sure that all of the utilities could be um, provided to potentially have a large building there like a school. That will never happen unless the voters approve it. So any type of uh, large scale development out there will have to take voter approval. So we're talking probably a couple of years before that would ever transpire. Um, and since the city is the one getting the original ten grounds at the old high school, we were just going to have a memorandum of understanding that when the development at the VA gets going, the Board of Supervisors has approved the concept map. So it's already in place that that was the designated use for the ground there. Um, then we can finalize any of the actual de-transactions when we have all of the logistical pieces in place. Does that make sense, Mark?
Yep. Board, any questions for Cassie?
So it's more transparency um, that
There's really nothing, there's really nothing going on right now until you folks get this process going and then present something
Correct.
In two years.
Correct.
Yeah, because I, I had posed some questions back um, because of this agreement. And then I said to, that we needed whatever, what changes, anything had to be presented to the board and um, further communication with the city. Uh, Cassie asked that if she could be on the agenda and we could, you know, further present to the board.
Okay.
What her thoughts are.
Okay. But just from a public standpoint, I just want to make sure, but, but everybody understands there's nothing going on here as far as land transfer until you come back to us or whatever board sits here.
Yep.
With survey, map, land transfer from the city, there's some steps that have to be
Yes, and that um, would go through the twenty-eight E agreement like you're developing the entire hundred and fifty-seven acres.
We're not in the development business, the city is.
Correct. Yes.
Nope.
So at this point, we just want to thank you for designating that ground for future school use if that comes to play and we are just going to continue on as is at this point, and we'll be back if there's an opportunity to do some development.
All right, very good. Cassie, thank you.
Thanks, Cassie. Appreciate it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close discussion?
Make motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnor, excuse me. Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi. All right. Next, we have a Class C retail alcohol license renewal app for uh, countryside. It is a little warm. Can we, anybody want to kick a, Lisa, do you know how to kick it on?
I think it's this one that's right here.
Okay. Jake?
Okay, so um, I guess I'll, I'll take this one. It's, um, this is a standard uh, renewal countryside. It has a venue down by Attica. Um, along the road, um, they've gone through the alcoholic beverages division process. I've sent the information out to department heads and it's, it's just a simple renewal. So I haven't received anything negative from anyone else.
Any, Jason, any issues?
No issues.
All right, very good. Is there a motion, board?
Make motion to approve the Class C uh, retail alcohol license for countryside properties.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnor. Hi.
Next, we have a special event permit application to use the courthouse grounds, Marion County Fair Association, August sixth. Jason, welcome.
Yeah, this is kind of like we did last year. Um, just to, we have that uh, Nationals kickoff party on Tuesday night. We want to make this more of like a uh, uh, the city and Brian Stickle have the uh, road blocked off for uh, alcohol server there. This will be more like a family area, kids have some, uh, maybe some race cars and race car drivers in there just for them to uh, intermingle with the fans and stuff and something for the kids to do. So just looking, use that parking lot for that evening. We have it from five to eleven, but I'm sure that part will be done probably by eight, nine o'clock and out of there, so.
Very good. I got an email or a text from Chris. He's fine with the special event app. Uh, Jason, any issues on your end? Okay. Questions, board?
Nope.
All right, if not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the special event per- uh, permit for Marion County Fair Association.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Next, another special event, Knoxville Chamber of Commerce for the tenth of August. Nathan?
Yeah, this is just for the parade to use the gazebo electrical power we use for the BA system for Derek Cardwell to ta- to announce the parade going through. So that's all we need.
All right, very good. Is there a motion, board?
I just commented, I know Nathan, I know they work together and all this. There is the um, farmer's market. I don't know if they're doing farmer's market on that, that's Saturday.
Yeah, they usually do the farmer's market. We do the downtown market, but we just use the gazebo just for the electric.
I just want, there is also the permit for that. So I just wanted to make sure that was upfront.
Yep, thank you. Is there a motion, board?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Just make sure you do work with the farmer's market is just what we're saying, but yeah.
Make a move that we uh, approved a special event permit application for the Knoxville Chamber of Commerce.
A second.
Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-two, FY twenty-five Iowa Community ICAP. I can read the whole thing. But this is uh, proxy designations for renewal and Scott, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, we um, uh, Jake had gotten everything into uh, ICAP and we've come back with not the anticipated thirty percent, but uh, twenty-four percent increase. So that's good. Uh, like we talked, um, you know, most of the pricing was based on a previous year's uh, building limit increase. And then this year, all the contents, building equipments, uh, those limits also went up ten percent. And then the really, the only, I would call it a significant change is the um, is the wind hail deductible. So uh, with all the stuff that we're seeing, like with the derecho is one in here now with the greenfield is, um, and this is happening across the board for personal, you know, homeowners, commercial owners and the counties and municipalities also. Is they're starting to uh, assess higher deductibles for wind hail related stuff. So with ICAP, what they've done is, is not blanket the wind hail deductible, but to call it a named storm deductible. So is if we have a derecho, something that's catastrophic like that and uh, the insurance services offices call it a name that storm, that is what's going to trigger a two percent deductible for the municipalities. So uh, I don't, I don't have the math on me right now, but let's say the courthouse was damaged by wind hail. Um, and we've got a multimillion dollar building that's two percent deductible, which is could be three hundred thousand dollars or or more. Um, and so not knowing uh, what the county's uh, finances are uh, for capital is is the consideration going forward of some type of a deductible reserve. Uh, it's just a recommendation or a thought, an idea um, to be able to fund something like that. I think what we're starting to see in the insurance industry is more frequency and more severity of these these convective storms. So uh, whether you do or you don't, that's knowing that when that day comes and it's, and it's a two percent deductible per property, per piece of equipment. So
Right.
Uh, if it's a, if it's a significant swath that takes, you know, multiple buildings and equipment, you can be looking at uh, an extremely sizable deductible. So that was really the only big change currently. I think it's a five thousand dollar deductible on almost everything else. Um, property, equipment, buildings, contents.
Be pretty pricey if we, you know, we have a big tornado come through and take down several buildings, yeah.
Only if they name it.
So, and we've, I've talked with ICAP too. Um, I would like to get an ICAP res- uh, executive down here, because I don't know that they've ever met with, with the board or even with Jake, but um, um, but just I guess to get more, more familiarity or more personalization, personalization, because I'm just kind of the in-between from ICAP to to the county, but um, that is one thing, but the, the next is what we're talked about. What are we going to do next year? So as Mark said, um, last time we met was that we can't sustain another twenty-five percent increase. Um, and that's where now we're starting to talk about strategizing the counties. Um, and we're letting ICAP, since there are, are so many of Iowa municipalities in the program, um, ICAP becomes a funnel uh, of that information for us to have access to, which is what is everybody doing? So at this, at the, the folks that renewed in January, we waited to see what they did to, to kind of base how the county uh, acted with their renewal. Um, and uh, which was basically nothing, renew as is, um, and then wait to see. So we've asked ICAP, what's expected for next year? And they said basically in November, October, November is when ICAP gets together and starts looking at how they've recovered from these those losses, these price increases, and then what's going to happen next year. So good or bad, we should know in the fall what's going to happen to the municipalities that were renewed in January. And we could expect probably something the same. So I would like to get again with Jake and, and possibly the board supervisors to sit down and review, because at that time we might have to talk about strategizing the insurance. Do we insure, do we self-insure some of these things? Do we go actual cash value on some of these things? Um, and, and unfortunately, that seems like a cumbersome, it becomes a meeting, uh, quite detailed meeting, but so at, at this point, we're still just kind of in a, a holding pattern um, on what's going to happen in the future. So for today, we're just uh, uh, here to propose the the uh, the renewal premium, uh, the proxy signature. And people will pay the premium.
So just a couple of comments, Scott, as you think forward about this, to that November timeframe, when they give you a kind of what the time horizon will be on future rate increases, and there will be future rate increases. Now that they've gone to a name storm deductible, which is blowing through the entire insurance industry, this is what happens when you televise everything.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody wants to attach a name to it, which means it costs more, okay? Windstorms now get names. From a reserving standpoint, we have the capital fund, capital projects fund. I would start putting some dollars in the capital projects fund for a reserve for insurance. So it becomes dual purpose. Second, Scott, when you, when you come back in November, the difference between the outer shell of a building and we still don't have Junction ninety-two yet. So once that's added, that's going to significantly increase the premium. Just adding that building, right? So you are looking at a million dollar outlay once Junction ninety-two is complete. So you're going to have to really think, what do you want to ensure in terms of your contents or the shell of the building? And how do you want to distribute that from a self-insurance standpoint or increased deductibles? Just a couple of thoughts. And then uh, you'll have to think about And then uh you'll have to think about that and we'll plan on something in November.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, Board?
I don't have any.
If there are, if there is none, I would uh recommend a a motion to uh approve the renewal, the signed proxy agreements.
Make motion to approve resolution uh twenty twenty-four seventy-two.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Very good. Scott, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate you guys staying on top of the stuff. All right, twenty twenty-four dash seventy-three, tax sale certificate and assignment. Is Michaela online?
Hi, Mark, I am. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay, yeah. So this is a parcel that has not had property taxes paid since two thousand and ten. I was approached by James Crosby. I do not know if he is at the meeting or not. Um but I was, okay, excellent. I was approached by Mr. Crosby about the possibility of obtaining this uh ta- county held tax sale. So I went ahead and launched the process. I did the public notification as required by the resolution that was set forth by the board in two thousand and six. Had Ann in the auditor's real estate office uh do the research for me, uh make sure that that was an appropriate thing to do from their standpoint. Identify all adjoining landowners so that I could send them a letter as well. I received one adjoining landowner letter back that they are not interested with in the ten day timeframe I set forth in the correspondence. Uh I did not receive a response from the other adjoining landowner. So unless someone is at the meeting today that I am aware of, there are no other interested parties. So Mr. Crosby uh did submit his sealed bid to the board. I left it with Jake. In this instance, I set the reserve for two hundred and forty-eight dollars, which is the amount of the back taxes on this parcel up to this date. So I would assume that the sealed bid would be at least that amount.
Okay, Jake?
Uh Michaela, do you want to open the seal bid now?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh the sealed bid would be for a check in the amount of three hundred dollars from James Crosby.
Okay, excellent. So and I always like to clarify for everyone's benefit that the purchase is for the assignment of the county held tax sale. That is not the purchase of a deed to this property. So then it would be Mr. Crosby's responsibility to pursue the tax sale foreclosure process on this property and then obtain a tax sale deed once that is complete.
You under- you understand that, Jim?
Very good. Well, thank you. Or is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve uh resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-three.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you, Michaela. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's kind of a nice letter opener.
They have a receiving file, the uh F Y twenty-four annual report.
Yeah, so still me. Uh this is, I'm required by Iowa Code to bring this to the board, present this publicly every year. Um at the end of our fiscal year, this is just a snapshot of everything we did every day throughout um the last fiscal year. Um I always Jake and I both always reiterate that this is kind of a a snapshot, a compilation of the monthly reports that Jake compiles and submits to the board and department heads. Uh this just gives an annual snapshot for review.
Any questions, Board? This is fully Jake fully audited.
Um this is the current audit year.
Yeah. Any questions?
I have none.
Make motion to receive and file.
Second.
Johnor?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi. Another receiving file. Sheriff?
You, you want ours just to be that easy and we can uh proceed, but otherwise Jenny's here to answer questions.
All right.
I'm here to back Jenny up.
Any questions? I submitted um the
Better find more help, Jenny.
Exactly. The quarterly and um annual fiscal year for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, so.
Yep. Any questions? If there isn't any, is there a motion to receive and file?
Make motion to receive and file.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Very good.
Thank you. Yeah.
This is as easy as it gets right here. All right. Special event permit application. Freedom for youth.
Um the person, I don't, I don't, the uh the individual that um was submitting this was on vacation this week, but she wanted to get it in um. Uh it's just like last year.
Yeah, I see Chris didn't have an issue with it.
Yeah.
But Board, any comments, questions?
No.
All right, if there aren't, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the special event application for freedom for youth.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Site plan review, AMC Mechanical, Missy?
Yes, so this is for the property at two fifteen Summit Street Notley, which you approved the rezoning May fourteen, um due general commercial restricted. Uh so Mr. Anderson has presented the site plan. So we've got the eighty by two hundred building up there that's going to be the office slash um shop, storage, and then we've got um they did relocate um from their original presentation, the accessory structure down there on the um south end. This went through the zoning commission on July sixteenth, um got approval. He did get a variance for the accessory structure because it exceeded our maximum height allowance for accessory structure, which is being amended. Um our accessory structure height max was only fifteen feet and he's only asking for twenty-one feet, which is still shorter than what you could put an accessory structure in residential. So we are um in the recodification amend and that that's been approved, but it did go through the proper process. So in all, this has had four public hearings. So it had two for the rezoning, um one for the variance and then one for the site plan. So we've given ample um opportunity for, we've had um one neighbor call. I mean, it's based on they don't really want change in the area, but I think this is a great change. It's taken a dilapidated outdated building where Jake went to school. Um and turned it into something that's going to be
Saying Jake is outdated and dilapidated. Is that what you were saying? I just want to make sure I understand, Missy.
Let's say page, so I guess.
All right, all right.
Yes. Um but no, this, I think this is going to be a great thing for Ottley. You know, he's presenting um a very nice looking building and it's going to take this property um put some um a nice quality building on the tack roll.
All right. Board, any questions?
How was the vote?
It was unanimous.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, I have no problem with this.
I have no problem either.
Is there a motion?
They're working with environmental health. They've got the subject, the preliminary. So they've got it all ironed out um in accordance with the detention that's going in that's required due to the size of the building. And so he's working with Cameron and they've got that.
Great. Is there a motion for the site plan?
Make motion to approve site plan for AMC Mechanical.
Second.
Johnor?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi. All right, very good. Next, we have the uh I M W C A site visit concerns and recommendations. Lisa?
I wore my heels today, so I'd be tall. All right, I'm last and I'm gonna make it really brief. And we'll just start here. Okay. Um as some of you know, uh Jeff and I, uh Jeff Anderson and I co uh chair the safety committee. And annually, we meet with I M W C A um with their uh safety and risk improvement advisor, Scott Smith. So we met with him on May twenty-third. Um as you can imagine, um insurance world is crazy right now, and that's going to include our work comp. So just some things that are coming down the pipe from I M W C A. Couple of things that they're changing and then a couple um recommendations that they are making for the county. One of those has to do, one of the changes has to do with indemnity claims. And what an indemnity claim is, is um those claims that are paid to an injured employee um that has a restriction that's not able to come back to work. So we're not paying them a salary or wage. They're getting their money from their paycheck from I M W C A for whatever reason. Work comp is now going to use the indemnity claims and um use more of the dollars. In figuring their mod rates. I could give you a whole presentation. I had a whole presentation and I'm like, I I'm not gonna give you a mod rate instructions, but I what I'll tell you is I'll go over it. And if you have more questions, just come see me and it'll probably be easier a one-off to explain all of it because it's a lot of terminology and a lot of figures. But in the past, the mod rate, they would use the first eighteen thousand five hundred dollars and weight that on of an indemnity claim. And that would be weighted for our mod rate. Okay? Now that eighteen five is going to be thirty thousand. Okay, so if we have an indemnity claim, thirty thousand is going to be used as weighted or um counted on the mod rate. And remember the the claims paid that sticks with us for three years. Okay? Um the mod rate you remember is the rate one is, you know, um what do I say? Average risk. If it's in, if it's a if it's above one, then you're um it's a credit mod or you're going to have like a one point two against your payroll. If it's what we've generally been is running under one, and so that gives you a credit mod. So that means that you're not paying your full premium from your payroll um with that mod rate. And our mod rate has been fairly good. Okay? So just something on the back end that um
And what is the mod rate going to then?
I didn't hear what she said.
What's the mod rate going to?
It goes into um your payroll.
No, no, what is it?
What's the number, Lisa? What's it going, what's it going to?
It's under one. What's it going to now?
What is it now?
What is it now?
It is
and we talked several different years. So um twenty-three, twenty-four was seven point seven five and then I think it was six. So the final period for twenty-two, twenty-three ended up being point six five. We work off of
And they have it give us what, when do that, when does the mod rates come out then? Because obviously it's going to change.
It'll be in the spring. This will affect what comes out in the spring.
Good.
Okay. Um the other thing that I included in your packet was a list of those employees that have repeat claims. That is something that we review with them um annually. And then also the lag report. The lag report is the days of um the days it took the injured employee to report the injury. And um the top five of those were quite lengthy. And I don't think I have to tell anybody that the longer you wait to get um treated for your injury, sometimes the worse it can be. So those are two reports that I M W C A really looks at um and and provides to us. We really need to um emphasize the employees need to call company nurse. That's going to be huge. But I won't go down the weeds on that yet either. So um currently, we do have an indemnity claim. Um and we have spoke with I M W C A several times and basically what they're doing is putting uh Marion County on a risk management action plan. And what that entails is if no progress or um any effort to correct our issues, they could take away our discounts. Currently, right now, eighty-four thousand dollars of our premiums is is in discounts. It's discounted by eighty-four thousand. If no improvements are made, then they'll put us on a um last chance, high level risk management plan, no discounts, and then they could tack on a s- a surcharge. So they have our attention. We get it. I showed you a list of I shared with you the um recommendations that they are um put forth to us. There's three general policies that they would like to see. Um Jeff and I have met with the safety committee and the safety committee is a lot of new members as we know that there's, you know, a lot of department heads and people that were on that had that have um gone and left. So one big thing is, is that we are going to um emphasize that the board has required all departments be a part of the safety committee. We know from time to time those those meetings don't work out, but um the board has stated that all departments must be represented on the safety committee. So we appreciate that. So moving forward, um basically what I'm asking is your support when the safety committee comes up with these policies that you put them in place. So we can get back on track on our safety. We, before COVID, we were, we were doing awesome. We were chugging along, doing our safety programs. And COVID just kind of ended all that. So.
When is the next safety committee meeting then? Are you guys got one scheduled?
September.
It'll be September and I think we moved it to the twenty-fifth. Is that right, Renee?
Oh, I know the limit.
Yep, we originally um had it for the eighteenth and then we had to move it to the twenty-fifth. Um so what we will be doing is um we have some recommendations or we have some model plans from other places. Um Steve has shared some of those that we can look at. I M W C A has model programs on their website that we can use to tailor to Marion County.
And we're supposed to be responding to the insurance regarding
Lisa, is there any action you need right now? Or are you going to wait until the safety committee meeting, review the draft plans?
And what I
Responsive to I dip the work comp folks?
And the response needs to be um sent to work comp by August thirteenth. And so what I would like to do is put on there that we are working um through our safety committee and our board of supervisor members to come up with policy. Uh they're not expecting us to have the policy done by August thirteenth. I just have to have a response.
Yeah, and I would just like to stress that I do think um the safety committee needs to continue to meet, whether it's, you know,
Mm hmm.
quarterly, however, to get, make sure we're staying on top of this. And I know COVID rocked everybody's world, but I do think obviously it's shown its importance. So.
Right. Any other, any questions?
Board, any questions for Lisa?
No, I I think we need to, need, we need to get on board with it and move it along.
That's not all I have.
Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's a motion to close discussion.
Make the motion to close discussion.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Updates, Steve?
Uh I have a heard a meeting later this week.
All right.
Um the only, I don't really have any updates other than I would like to remind everyone we are honoring Steve Edwards um this Friday from two to four at the Public Health Building um. we are honoring Steve Edwards um this Friday from two to four at the Public Health Building. Um Steve has been with us for forty-four years. So.
Very good. Thank you. Nothing from me.
At Public Health.
At Public Health.
Yep.
Yeah, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second. McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Very good. We are adjourned.